Here we go. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is our first evening meeting in Port Orford, July 24th, 5:00 PM, in the Gable Chambers in Port Orford. If you would, please rise. Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have a large agenda for the meeting, but we do, we have planned to have these meetings in all parts incorporated cities of the county. So we are keeping our word as a board to do that. I will ask everyone in the chamber, if you do come up for public comments, and also our commissioners, council, that we do not have microphones. So if you would, please speak up and be clear. They look real nice, and they sure look like they're on, but they're not working.
They're recording.
Oh, they are recording. Okay. Okay, good. All right. So let's start. Do I have any amendments to the agenda?
Can I do my report first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yes, Matt Hall, the fair started today. I've got some mileage out of this document. So if anybody, Wednesday through Saturday, right? Welcome all. Thanks. Line of duty deaths, law enforcement officers is up from 63, Mr. Chair, to 68. If there's any good news, at the end of almost seven months here, the last, 2018 was 163. So the average is going down, and we hope that trend continues. Very hopeful there. Firefighting deaths is up to 29, two since our last meeting, and military deaths from 19 up to 21. Thank you on that.
Thank you.
Oh, do we have a moment of silence?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair Pash.
Thank you. All right. Do I have any amendments to the agenda?
Done here.
I have two. Could we pull number H, which, or I'm sorry, H, which is the higher order for the plumbing inspector? We have to work with some details with him yet on that position. And then K, which is the contractor in order for Moss Adams, we'll have to bring that back after next meeting.
Okay. Any further? May I get a motion, please?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as amended, or even the agenda as amended.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Have any further comments? Call for the roll, please.
Mr. Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Voice.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Mr. Chair, can we move one or two people over here? We're a little heavy on that side there. I'm feeling lonely over here. No volunteers, huh?
Microphones are up here.
Okay.
All right. So we're gonna have public comments. Anyone wishing to make a public comment, I already have one here. I don't have any sheets with me. If you would, just stand where you are if you'd like.
I think there's a microphone right there.
Oh, yes. Is there a seat there? Is there a seat here? Maybe we could put a seat there, it'd be great. And yeah, just come up and have a seat. And we'd like to limit the public comments to about three minutes. And again, speak loudly and clearly so we can hear you. Thank you. Mr. Wagner? Bryce Wagner.
Thank you.
Famous writer in the Port Orford.
Thank you for being here. I would like to bring something to your attention that's been a problem up Elk River on the Forest Service lands for several years and needs attention because our roads are literally gonna go away. I'd like to bring attention to you in the Curry County, about our Curry County US Forest Service land, roads, in some areas that are in vital need of greater work in pulling the ditches. Upper Elk River significantly, specifically, I'm sorry, from Butler Bar to the summit of Iron Mountain is in dire need of road grader work. There are places where water runs down the road for hundreds of feet in the winter, eroding and digging deep ruts, taking away the road top layer that was put in at much expense to the Forest Service. We are talking vast improvement with just a road grader, with somebody that's an expert grader operator. If nothing else, grade the roads and install water bars if they think it's too intense to pull the ditches clean. And I've recently met, and Court was at the meeting too, and we met the two new Rangers, and I suggested that they, well, they take advantage of the, all of you know about the volunteers, Zip, Fendrick and that group. But I've encouraged the two forest rangers to consider grading, or, and I'd really love to see the Forest Service get one good grader, and then they could switch it from district to district. And there's, there are lots of retired volunteer machinery operators that could run a road grader and do some of this vital needed work. You know, and these roads are in terrible shape and serious need of grading and ditching. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do you want to comment now, or just after all public comments?
You can comment, Matthew.
Bryce, thank you very much. Director Schmelzer, we're gonna have a meeting talking about the Elk River parks with, I think the end of August, or would you guess?
Beginning of August.
Beginning of August?
I guess the fall.
So look for public notice on that, Bryce. We're gonna be talking about the exchange between the Forest Service and the park management for Butler, what's the other one, Summer, and then Laird Lake. And so if you want to come and give testimony on that, we, this would be a good time also to bring up the road and where the county road ends and the Forest Service ends there. So thank you very much for that, that information.
Anyone else for public comment? Evening, Ann.
Hello. I'm Ann Velisis, and I agree with Bryce and, I agree with Bryce, I'll just put that in. I just wanted to thank you guys so much for coming up here to Port Orford. I think that, you know, we don't have a big crowd tonight, so to figure out how to make it effective in the future, we'll have to figure out how to get the notice better because the Port Orford paper comes out on Wednesday. And so, anyway, but thank you for coming. I also just wanted to say again, thank you for the work, the vote that we took on the Floris Lake property, and just wondered if there's any, any updates there. I also wanted to thank you for your work that I've been reading about in the paper to figure out the taxing district issue and figure that out. So anyway, thank you.
There really aren't any updates that I know of on the Floris Lake. We are, I did speak yesterday with one of the parks people, and we're moving forward with some other things, but they really didn't have a comment on that. I think that's their September meeting, they said they were gonna bring that up at their September meeting. So we should hear something shortly after that.
And their September meeting is in Brookings, by the way.
Yes.
And that was, Dennis Comfort was in town yesterday, and he's the regional for the whole coast of Oregon. So we're, we're, we're working with him pretty close and highly respect him.
Yep. Next.
I'm Tim Palmer from Port Orford. Welcome to Port Orford. Not that going to Gold Beach keeps me from going to a meeting there. I was just there at your meeting.
Thank you for attending.
You're welcome, Court. And we heard presentations at your request from AFRC, the American Forest Resource Council. And this is the industrial group, their membership is 100 industrial industry members. And the presentation was very interesting, for the most part, about non-controversial items. But I would just like to urge you to recognize, which I'm sure you do, that the issues of forest management and national forests are very complex. And in fact, it's that complexity is the reason why none of us really get our way. It's always a compromise. And that if you plan to take any specific actions in the future, which you did not do today, I recognize that, but if you do plan on that in the future, that you certainly thoroughly vet those proposals publicly in your meetings so that we can have a chance to talk that over, and so that you can have a chance to perhaps hear from people on other sides of this issue as well, and as well as simply from the timber industry and the groups that were represented today.
So we will be spending, if I may, Mr. Chair, we will definitely be spending, not just because of your background with rivers, which is obviously greatly extensive, issues related to that, and where we're going on the addition of, you saw the 60,000 acres on Rogue River, and I'm very much involved in that. You will be my first phone call, and I mean that quite sincerely.
So I'll look forward to, there'll be public notice about that, your consideration of it and so forth, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Court.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Now we're in trouble. Commissioners, Dave Bassett here. First of all, I'd like to thank all three of you, Ann Julie, for attending the SWAC Board meeting in, at the Brookings campus on Monday, the 15th. At that meeting, I shared with you that it would be advantageous to have a training program, not only for construction technology, but also building inspection technology. I've since learned that Rogue Community College dropped that program when the recession hit in '07 or thereabouts. And so I also know now that Shemecata has both programs, and working with Mark Stevenson at Josephine County, we're looking to contact Mark Henderson, who was the lead instructor at Rogue, who now teaches at OTI. So bottom line, we're working on it. For not only the benefit of better construction and availability of tradespeople, but also so that we don't have this constant problem of trying to find appropriate qualified people to do our programs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, thanks for your service on that board, very much.
It's nice to have someone in Curry County on that board.
He's the one. We're working on that.
It will be worked on, trust me. And I am still doing extensive research on that whole project. College of the Redwoods is on the air all the time in Curry County, but I don't hear advertisements for SWAC on the radio. So we're gonna continue and will not relent on that project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to give a quick, a little brief on what we're talking about here?
Just on the agenda.
No?
It's written on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. So ending public comments. Any more public comments? We are going to have a presentation, tsunami siren education presentation, Jeremy Duhmeyer and his light.
Thank you. Can we get this set up real quick?
Yeah, we're gonna turn out a couple of the lights here as well to make it a little There we go. Nice to be young, David. He got up a lot quicker than you did.
Right? So, from this microphone around, so I can be more clear to everybody. So for the record, Jeremy Duhmeyer, Curry County Emergency Manager, and we're gonna talk about the tsunami sirens we have in Curry County, or the ones that are failing, I should say. Before we get really into the tsunami sirens, we need to talk about what is a tsunami. This image here is not a tsunami, just, I'll drop that right now. This is a Hollywood apocalyptic scene. Tsunamis are not 400, 500-foot waves like this. There are two types of tsunamis that we worry about when it comes to our shorelines. The first one is a local tsunami. That is the big event for us. Generated by a very large earthquake in our subduction zone. Now, when I say very large, I'm not talking about a six or 6.5 that we often see offshore of Port Orford here. That's a good-sized earthquake. A large earthquake would be something similar to what just happened in California, magnitude seven. A very large earthquake that can generate a tsunami in our subduction zone is anywhere between 30 times to 900 times the power of what just happened in California. A magnitude 9.0 earthquake is 900 times more powerful than a seven. Such an earthquake has the capability of displacing the seafloor, pushing water inland in a series of tidal surges. In our history, we have had 40 mapped earthquakes along our fault zone offshore in the magnitude eight to nine range. Half of those, those magnitude eights, started down here. So we actually see the most of these events locally. On the average, as I mentioned on the slides, every 10,000, over 10,000 years, we've got 40 of these. If you do the math on that, that's one every 250 years. So our last one we had, which was January 26, 1700, at 9:00 PM, you would think were overdue. That's a catchy thought process, but not necessarily the truth, as these earthquakes may happen decades apart or millennia apart. But the fact is, we are storing energy and we could experience a local tsunami. When it comes to our warning systems, that we're gonna talk about a little bit later on, the ground shaking is the only warning you get. It's just that simple. This image right here is the Good Friday earthquake in Alaska in 1964, a magnitude 9.2 event. This is what I expect for Curry County. This is why I will say the ground shaking is your only warning, because communication systems, the ability to dispatch any sort of warning, radio towers, I expect them to fail. And frankly, in a local tsunami event, you have approximately 10 to 15 minutes from the start of the shaking to evacuate. So again, the ground shakes, as soon as it's safe to do so, evacuate, evacuate, evacuate. Do not wait for any government warning. What we have our warning systems for is something like this, a distant tsunami. The video that's playing in the background here is from the Tohoku earthquake in Japan. This is the port of Brookings Harbor. This was March 11th, 2011. I'm gonna throw a big caveat on this one. The person filming this is very fortunate that we did not have a high tide at that event, as he is certainly in the inundation zone for a distant tsunami. During that event, we did have sirens blaring at the port of Brookings Harbor and other places, and up and down the Oregon coast, there were issues still with people coming down into the hazard area. Some people actually went to the beach to experience it firsthand. So with that being said, distant tsunami is just that, it's distantly sourced, generated by a large subduction earthquake in a distant location such as Japan, Chile, Kamchatka, Alaska. When a distant earthquake and tsunami occurs, we have at least four hours of leave time when it happens. So if it happens in Alaska, we have four hours of notice to be able to effect evacuations from the coastal areas. In Japan, about eight hours, give or take. Chile can be up to 18 hours. Since 1933, we've had 31 distant tsunamis that have been observed on or near Curry County. And I'm throwing in Delano County into that near. Crescent City, of course, is a tsunami magnet. So they've actually had that full 31. We've experienced quite a few of those. When we talk about the hazards of these events, this is just half of the county, this is the north half. The map on the right that you see, many people are familiar with, it's in your tsunami brochures, that is for a local tsunami event. You'll notice there's a lot more area colored in for a local tsunami. The water is gonna push in further, a lot higher, and can affect more areas. For instance, where we're sitting today would be underwater in a local tsunami. In a distant tsunami, and that's what this map is on the right, on the left, excuse me, it is a beach hazards event. It is not gonna get here to the city hall. In fact, this map is modeled after a magnitude 9.2 earthquake in Alaska, which coincidentally is identical to what happened in 1964. There will be beach run-up. There will be effect in the ports and harbors, the rivers and such, where you will have some great scouring, some good tidal influence, as we saw in that video previously. There will be some sand dunes that get overtopped. Sheridan Dunes, very likely, in a large distant event from Alaska, will probably, could possibly be taken out, and Lake Shore Drive would possibly be at risk under the worst-case distant tsunami event. But by and large, a distant tsunami event is confined right along the strips of the So when we get notification of a distant tsunami, these are the notification statements we get. Now, I get information statements almost as a matter of routine. Interesting earthquake happened, magnitude four, magnitude five, magnitude six. No threat, just take note of it and carry on. A watch is something similar to what we got January 23rd of last year. Earthquake occurred in a subduction zone offshore of Alaska in this case. Magnitude was about eight, if I remember correctly. Tsunami is possible, stay tuned for information. Now, what was great is that as soon as we got that watch notification, we were also able to look at the dark buoys that give the tidal gauge information, tell you how much displacement there is. And in that Alaskan event last year, there was no change, no major change in the tidal gauge. So we were able to quickly figure out that we were not at risk for a distant tsunami event here in Curry County. We did stay in tune. I was in the dispatch center with Sheriff Ward, now Lieutenant Hensley in dispatch, kept up on all the information and realized that we did not have to act upon what we had, which is great, we didn't have to give a false alarm. More often than not, we get advisory statements, and that's really what we got when it came to the Tohoku earthquake in 2011. Tsunami has been generated, we know it's coming. Strong currents and waves are dangerous to those near the waterways. Stay out of the water, away from beaches and waterways. And that's when you evacuate the coastline, not coastal residences, but the coastline. In an advisory statement, a distant tsunami, throughout the entirety of Curry County, there are 177, plus or minus a few, buildings in the distant tsunami zone. 176 of those are in harbor. One is in unincorporated Curry County, and although I'm not positive, I would suspect that's about Yupacrick, but there again, I'm not positive. A tsunami warning, we likely will not receive this. Now, a tsunami warning will be generated if Alaska rips off a big earthquake. But what will more likely than not happen is it'll get downgraded to us to an advisory. However, if a tsunami warning is issued, dangerous coastal flooding and powerful currents are possible. This is a wave that may push up land a bit, move to high ground or inland. A warning is issued, such as, again, going back to Japan, when their earthquake happened, they issued a tsunami warning. They're very resilient, their buildings were able to stand, they were able to still move about, the fact that most of their infrastructure stood, including the road systems, after the event. They got the tsunami warning, and those that heated it had a better chance at survival. There was a lot of people that did not, unfortunately. So what happens when we get these warnings? We have a lot of different ways of notifying the public of a threat. We have the Everbridge Reverse 911 system. That is where dispatch can send you a notification to your landline, your cellphone, your text messaging system, or to your email, however you choose to sign up. Currently, we have 13,000 people in Curry County sign up for the Everbridge Reverse 911 system. Really neat thing, in October, Everbridge will have the ability, and us as locals will then be able to tie into this, have the ability to access the cellphone towers directly and use wireless emergency alerts. That is very similar to the presidential alert that many people who have cell phones that are enabled received in October of the year previous. Residential alert, this is a test, we actually will have that capability in October, or pretty close to it. Everbridge is dated October, and I'm hoping that sticks. So we have two different ways there to just mass notify people. In addition, we've been working very hard on building up the Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, volunteers that can assist law enforcement, fire departments in making door-to-door notifications, evacuations of beaches and such. When we had the Tohoku event, we had law enforcement, fire departments going door-to-door in the low-lying areas and making notifications, clearing the beaches. Again, we still had people that chose to become part of the problem, but those were few. We were able to actually get a very good evacuation affected. Which leads us to this.
Did you just hit a button?
I hit forward. We have these tsunami sirens here in Curry County. We have 17 of them. In the last 18 months that I've been in this position, I have repaired two of them, one here in Port Orford, one down in Harris Beach. I currently have four that are operational. And I'll qualify that, that are reliably operational. One has an RF issue, receiving radio frequencies, may or may not work. It's not something I can really bank on as being there. The one in Harris Beach that I just fixed is offline already. I just repaired that last fall.
Is the sirens working?
Everything I've received, it says that the Port Orford sirens are working.
What is the siren signal, what's the duration?
So the sound is very similar to what just came across the speaker there, of course. It is a, when it is a full-blown tsunami siren, it's a three-minute blast. When it's the test on the first Wednesday of each month at 11:00 AM, it's one minute. That actually brings up a great point. Most people don't even know what the tsunami siren actually means, or how long the sound goes for. There are variances from county to county, state to state. There were variances, so I'll get to that point. In some places, the tsunami siren was 30 seconds. That was the indication to go to high ground. In some places, one minute was the duration. And mind you, we test at a minute. So can you imagine being a tourist coming to this area, hearing those horns go off? And where you're from, it's, that means go to high ground. Very confusing, and there's been a lot of issues with that. The issues we have, these tsunami sirens, are not new. This article here from Delano Tripit is from February of 2014, where even back then, five and a half years ago, we considered the obsolescence of these sirens with the new systems that we have in place. The cost of repairing these systems are quite high. I did a poll of my coastal emergency management counterparts. Without information from Douglas and Lane County, every county reported very similar information. They do not support, as a county, tsunami sirens. It is too expensive. The reliability of these sirens is not high enough per the cost, and with everything we have as far as time to evacuate, notifications that can be made with the current systems and volunteers in place, it is not reasonable to spend the kind of money necessary on these The other part of this, when I talk about reliability, I want to point one thing out. So this is the brand-new Omni Eclipse 8. This is a high-powered tsunami siren. Puts out an ear-shattering amount of noise up close. Ambient noise level is 70 decibels. At 70 decibels, it has an effective range of 2,200 feet. So if I translate that to north and south, I have .8 miles of audible siren on a good day without wind, without breaking surf. And assuming that all 17 sirens are lined up north-south, and they're not, I was actually quite surprised, there's a siren on Cape Perella, at 400 feet elevation when the fire department is.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
A tsunami's not gonna get to Cape Perella. There's no, no reason to have it there. But if all 17 sirens were lined up north-south, we would have about 13 and a half miles of linear coverage out of these tsunami sirens on an 80-mile-long coastline.
They use it to, don't want them to.
And there are parts of our coast that do not have these anyhow, such as Pistol River. There's a siren at the fire hall, but that's on the other side of a hill. Where we have the wave bash and other events, there is no siren.
Yes. They use it to indicate that there's a fire, rather than a tsunami.
And that's something that municipalities and local districts can still utilize if their sirens are up and working. But again, for a tsunami warning system, this technology frankly is outdated and ineffective. Unfortunately, the table's cutting off the numbers there. Where this came from, where this discussion's coming from, is that siren right there at Boy's Cove Park. You can see quite a bit of daylight coming through the horns on those. Just to replace the head, just that unit right there, is gonna be $22,000. Just to replace the head, just that unit right there, is gonna be $22,000. And that assumes that the radio frequency system is in good shape, that assumes that the electrical systems are in good shape, that assumes that the motherboard and computer systems from 2001 are still in good shape, that assumes that the heater within that housing unit is still in good shape. Just to switch out all new systems, start from, starting from scratch, you are generally looking at between $50,000 to $100,000 per siren, depending upon location and what you need to do for a whole new system, top to bottom.
I think we know our answer.
My budget in emergency management is $120,000. This is approximately one-fifth or one-sixth of that budget. I can't afford to keep up with these, frankly. Juxtaposed to that, with our Reverse 911 System, we pay $6,500 a year to have that system in place. And we have the WEI capabilities coming up, and we have volunteers and first responders and firefighters that can make notifications and do so with a lot less confusion. So, with this, the cost to repair and replace the sirens is excessive versus the benefit and capability, they're very limited. Oregon counties have discontinued their use, I'll, I'll, uh, qualify that. There are municipalities that do have the ability to operate tsunami sirens, but the counties do not support them and do not operate them as tsunami sirens. We have multiple warning systems in place that are much more cost-effective and are more effective for getting out to the public. Again, with a distant tsunami, we have a lead time of at least four hours. We can clear the beaches quite easily in four hours with a distant tsunami event. I am recommending that we discontinue the use as a county of these tsunami sirens, that we no longer test them on the first Wednesday of each month, that we no longer support the technology. If municipalities such as Gold Beach continue to use them for their fire departments, I would encourage that, of course, but it's not reasonable to spend the kind of money necessary on technology that is just dislimited.
Okay, I have a question. We have tourists that come every year, probably 50% of our population is tourists. Can they be warned with the systems that you're thinking about?
Yes. So, with these systems in place, tourists that have cellphones, as most everyone does, it seems, in October, we have this ability right here, to be able to access any cellphone that is enabled within range of a cellphone tower.
Okay.
Now, in order to have that cellphone enabled, you check with your cellphone provider, see if you have that capability, and see how to turn it on. Unfortunately, each phone is different. My Samsung and my Motorola are completely different to how you turn on that alert system. So, I can't tell you how to do that exactly. Best thing to do is just get ahold of your carrier and find out how to enable it. Um, and again, we have law enforcement, we have fire departments, we have 17 departments total. And in fact, in 2011, I was accused Forest Protective Association, and I assisted with some evacuations. So, we have plenty of capability to clear the tourist areas, if you will, these areas.
I think all of the large carriers now have a, you can go on their website and/or Google how to turn that on, and it's, it's a pretty simple process how to turn that on. Um, I received, uh, I, I received Amber Alerts on my phones, I received, I received that presidential alert, uh, several months ago. I mean, it's, it's pretty easy to turn it on.
Yes, sir.
Could you, you're gonna have to step up to the microphone, I'm sorry, sir. Everything has to be recorded.
Hi, everyone. Mike Nibs, Floris Lake. What's the situation with local coverage for cellphones? Because it seems like some of the more remote areas around Floris Lake and Valley Flora, uh, in particular, have no cellphone coverage.
Well, and indeed, I, I do know that Floris Lake has limited at best cellphone coverage. Uh, having been up there several times, I know it's difficult to get my Verizon phone to get a phone call. However, I also know I can get text messages quite easily because it requires less bandwidth. Um, at the same time, there's also the Langloes Fire Department there. There's not a lot of tourist beach north of Floris Lake. I know there's New River, that's one spot, of course. But we have the ability to use Langloes Fire, and of course, the fire chief there is also my counterpart in Coos County, which makes that even nicer. We have a park host at Floris Lake, and if we were to look at the map, the inundation map again, for the distant event, Floris Lake, more likely than not, based on the evidence that's at hand, would not be overtaken. The lake elevation itself is 20 feet, which under most circumstances is higher than a distant tsunami event would be.
So, I want to have another comment to that as well. NACO, which is National Association of Counties, is, has a huge push-on right now for an app called TestIt. And if you will all go online and download, uh, on your cellphone, download this little app, testit.com, it actually will measure the, the upload and download speeds in the area you are standing at that moment. Cellphone carriers, to be brief on the cellphone carriers, if one person in Port Orford gets 4G, the, the cellphone carrier can say, "We are active 4G in Port Orford." So, what NACO is doing is holding the carrier's feet to the fire that they have to, everywhere that there is a test-it, test done on a cellphone, if they say it's 4G there, they have to be able to provide it in the SC, uh, uh, Federal Communications, whatever, I don't, SEC, there is, is going to hold their feet to the fire on this now. Um, so, I would encourage everyone that, that hears this to download the TestIt app and push it as many times as you can, it's free, and it'll just keep downloading to this website what the actual upload and download speeds are where you're standing, and if they get enough hits, they have to come in and, and provide better service to those areas. Commissioner Gold?
Is there an actual app that we can access that would, um, activate our phones so we get these warnings?
You can activate the WEI alerts on your phone.
W E I?
W E A. As I mentioned, the best thing to do is get ahold of your cellphone carrier and determine how to do that on your individual phone, as each phone is different, how you go through the settings. It's just a simple toggle switch, if you will, to just turn it off. But again, I don't know each individual phone to be able to say how to do yours.
Well, and I would hope that the newspaper maybe prints something about this so that people can be aware of what they need to do.
The other thing, too, is there are apps out there for smartphones. I use the FEMA app. I get notifications fairly quick off of that site for these type of events. Actually, in January of the year previous, when we had the watch, that's what notified me first, okay? Actually beat the weather service out.
Yeah, my question is, it's a nine-plus event, how much of a raise in ocean? Like you said, 20 feet on the dune at Floris Lake, but say it was a nine, two or three, what's the estimates of raise?
So, for a local event, like you're talking about with the magnitude nine, um, Port Orford, where we're standing, we would be underwater, up to about Jackson Street, more or less.
Wow.
Okay.
Again, on a eight, what is the wave height predicted to be on a nine?
On a nine?
Yeah.
I don't have Floris Lake memorized at this moment, but there is plenty of evidence, historical evidence, uh, geologic evidence, that shows that the run-up from a large local event such as in 1700 can push quite a ways inland and up in elevation. There are some areas up to 100 feet in elevation that have seen tsunami hazards, but that is local to certain areas. So, the best thing I would suggest is to look at the tsunami hazard maps for the large event, and I can talk to you offline if you want and show you what that would look like for Floris Lake.
We know what it's like.
They did.
All right, Jeremy.
Well, so, do you have it mapped on a major event in nine, two or whatever, for Six's country and Elk River country?
Yes.
None of us have ever been able to see how far your estimates of a large event's gonna go up our rivers.
I can give you that real quick, if I can give you a minute to do so. I actually have all 17 of the tsunami brochures put together in one nice, neat little package. The map that I had up here, this is the distant tsunami threat hazard map. And it'll take just a moment here.
Jeremy, the other thing we can do is put this on the county's website, and then people can just access the county website and it'll be on there.
So, that is the entire county large local tsunami hazard zone. For Port Orford.
This is a local, though, not a...
This is for a local event where you feel the ground shaking.
Who wants to get the purple ones, what? Do you like purple ones, what?
It depends on magnitude, going from a mid-eight all the way up to a 9.2.
There's also an interactive map, is there not?
Yes, Dogami has those interactive maps online.
And you can put in your address and...
Correct. You can, you actually put your address in on these maps through Dogami's website and determine what your risk is based on a local event.
Commissioner Gold?
Could you put a link on our website to all these various places so people could access and figure out what their address or what would happen at their address?
I will have to work on that. I am much more adept at Facebook, I'll admit, and I do have these links on my Facebook, the Curry County Emergency Services Facebook page. The website is a little, uh, challenging.
Okay.
Okay.
So, but we do have it on the Curry County Emergency Services Facebook page, so if you want to go there, you can look and put your address in, and it'll tell you exactly what would happen in a eight or a nine-point earthquake.
Yes.
Um, Jeremy, for the county to, um, let the public know what you're recommending here, what is your recommendation for us? Is it to pass a resolution so the public is aware of the situation and why we would not be funding sirens?
A resolution or consensus to no longer support these sirens and utilize them as a tsunami warning system. Uh, otherwise, I will say our next test is gonna be the first Wednesday of next month, and I'm of the opinion that if we cut it off now, it's a good thing.
Do we do all of the, uh, do the three-city fire departments all have operable sirens like ours?
No. Port Orford does, uh, I'll qualify that, I know Port Orford has the sirens, I don't know if they use it for the fire department, I believe so, I'm sure. Uh, Gold Beach does operate, too, for their fire department. Brookings has not had an operable siren on top of their fire department for several years.
No reason our fire department couldn't use our siren as a tsunami warning, the way you've described here?
There are municipalities that do do that, that manually operate their sirens for tsunami warning. It can be done, but again...
Can you go if ours does?
Might want to ask your fire department, yeah, local. All right, so, as a board, do we want to make a, a motion to bring back a, uh...
Resolution?
A resolution for this?
Probably should be a resolution.
I so moved.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion?
Do we need to clarify the resolution? I, I think it's been done today.
I think it's been pretty clear that this, uh...
Very good.
Um, Council Huddle and myself and Jeremy will work on a resolution.
Per. Any further discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pat?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Jeremy. All right, next up, we have the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Okay, I'd like to read these off before we have, uh, go any farther on this. It's the BOC minutes for June 19th, 2019, BOC minutes for June 26th, business meeting, BOC minutes for June 26th, public hearing, job description and the orders for three lieutenants, parole and probation, criminal division and corrections for the sheriff's department, new facilities position director, trainee. I thought we were going to, uh, work on that.
Um, we could pull that if you'd like and then bring that back.
I think we need to pull that one, actually, because, um, it would be my recommendation that we pull it because that's something we, I think we need to fine-tune what that position is going to actually be in the, in the duties of that position.
So, send.
Commissioner Boyce?
So, now, we need to amend the agenda, don't we?
We need to amend the consent agenda, yes.
Okay.
Well, you would need to amend your motion to approve about that.
That's fine.
Right.
We can handle that.
Did Commissioner Gold make the motion, I think?
Yeah, I did, so, we'll, we'll get to that.
Let me, let me finish reading this off, and then we'll just take a, a whole new motion. All right, so, we're gonna pull E. All right, so, then, uh, we're also approving these CCPTSD Transit Grant 33653 and Grant 33654. We are, uh, a higher order for Director of Finance, approved contract and order for the Juvenile Department of Oregon Youth Authority with signature authority to the Curry County Juvenile Director, delegating the district attorneys, authority to sign grant documents for victim assistance program, and personal action forms to present sheriff's department new hires.
Okay, so, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, uh, including, um, as it's amended, taking out item E, the new facilities position director, trainee, for further, uh...
Evaluation.
Massaging, or whatever you want to call it, and then H and K for later.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pat?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, number seven will be Ms. Schmelzer's Director's Report.
Um, we have three things. Um, one is I want to let you know that, um, HR did go ahead and, um, find a company that could do our background checks for us. So, that has been initiated, um, there actually, as of, I think it was today or yesterday, we could start using them to do the background checks. So, that's all, that was a concern, that's all in place now, so we're good on that. Um, there was also, we had one property which, uh, we've received quite a few parking complaints about, um, in Wetterburn. Um, and just to let you know that, uh, the planning department today did finalize a letter, um, so the county could start taking some remedial action, asking them to correct the, notifying them they're in violation, and then asking them to correct their parking situation. And Mr. Fortman will be the one who will actually be, um, the name on the letter, so he will be taking that case to try and get us some clients on that pretty quick, if we can. And then the other one is, um, when we look at succession planning for all of our departments, uh, most of them are pretty good, not so good legally, unfortunately, we only have one attorney. But, um, there is a little concern, I have a little concern with the treasurer's office. We used to have a deputy treasurer, so if something happened to the treasurer, or she could, she was on vacation, you could have somebody step in. We do not have that on staff anymore, and, um, just in case the treasurer would want to take a vacation or choose to retire, for example, we would have, no one trained to take over that function. So, I would like to bring forward, or at least start that discussion on a deputy treasurer position, whether it be full-time or part-time, so that we can make sure that we're equipped in case something would happen to the treasurer.
We have a contract attorney, uh, with the county council's office who can fill in in my absence, or if I get hit by a bus, or what have you, so...
Yeah, she sits here in this.
I think we actually do, we're probably one of the few departments who has a succession plan.
You said hit by a bus?
Or, um, something else, sure. Eaten by a bear, what have you.
So, for the next meeting, I will bring back as a discussion item, um, uh, bring back the deputy treasurer position that we once had.
Okay. I just have a few comments, um, or under Commissioner comments. I just want to thank Port Orford for hosting this, uh, board meeting, um, for letting us use their facility here. We made a promise to the county, uh, several months ago that we will reach out to everyone in this county, so we all have an equal voice. Port Orford is a, is a large part of the constituents of this county, and I am glad that this board went along with this and chose to continue to do this. Uh, we hope that it will continue to grow, and more people in Port Orford area and Langloes area, Floris Lake will continue to come here and be more involved in the local government. I just... I just returned last week from the NACO meetings, the annual meetings, and I want to say there's a lot happening right now. There's a lot of money being pushed out of Washington for rural counties. While I was there, actually, President Trump signed an order to end, over the next two years, veteran suicide. He is forming committees to find ways to end veteran suicide, which I, I'm a huge part of the veterans program with NACO. And I don't know if everyone in this room knows, but one veteran an hour, basically, in this country commits suicide. One veteran an hour. Four of those veterans per day are active military service. We don't do enough to care for our veterans. We don't do enough to bring them home safely and to unwind them from what they've been through. We talk about PTSD and what they deal with. We give them the best tools we can give them to train them for combat. And we give them the best equipment that money can buy to send them over to fight. But when their service is done, we send them home with a thank you and go on home. We don't unwind their minds from the farm boy that was throwing hay a year and a half ago in a field or fishing in the Rogue River that has seen the most horrific things you can imagine in your lifetime. We don't unwind their minds from seeing that to send them back home to their communities and say, "Thank you for your service." There's a lot happening right now with that. I am honored to be part of it, and I was actually just a presidential appointment as a vice chair to that organization. And I am thrilled that I can be a part of that to help this county and the veterans that serve and will serve in this county to want to return home to their families here and have a normal life. So thank you for that. Commissioner Boyce?
Well, Commissioner Pash, congratulations.
Thank you.
I think you'll be very effective in that position, and I think that's going to benefit our citizens and especially the high number of veterans we have in Curry County. So I'm just very, very thankful. Quickly, Bryce, you mentioned Zipfendrick, our friend. He's part of the Curry County Public Lands Access Group, so some retired.
Can you speak up a little louder, Cory? My hearing gain went dead halfway.
I thought when I was talking, you probably turned it off. I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
No, Zipfendrick, Curry County Public Lands Access, they're a volunteer group. Some are retired foresters. They work on trails, road, and even combat a little bit, what they believe are often unnecessary road closures. So they charge $20 a year. It's a wonderful group of people, and they've been very effective in the community, and they're starting to get some well-deserved recognition around the state. Mr. Chair, the next thing I have, I wanted to thank Director Dumire for the work that he's working there around the state, with our emergency management people in Oregon. They're giving us good reports, and I appreciate your presentation tonight. I also want to thank Port Orford. I was warned that the colors in here might be a little wild, and I really like the colors.
Battleship gray?
Yeah, that, too. And for them to set the meeting place up, the remodeling they've done here, not surprised, but just, I just want to give them a good send-out. I'm not sure if this gavel would work generally in the Curry County Board of Commissioners, but that's a big one. Let the North County folks know that we have a tourism position, or maybe two. We've only had one applicant from North County, and we have voted and put our people in place for Central Curry County and South County. And this is, the TLT tax is going to be, do you want to speak to that? I appreciate that.
Sure. The voters approved transit lodging tax for the county. The ordinance that the commissioners approved required that we create a promotions committee and that there be two people from the north on that committee, two people from Central Curry and two people from the south, and then one member at large. We did advertise for the position, and we were able, for those positions, we were able to fill the positions for the central and the south, but we did not have enough interest from the north. So if anyone is interested, we're still looking for one more position to fill the north promotions committee spot.
Please, Port Orford, get involved.
Spread the word. Our Wolf Advisory Committee is in place, and that's, I think, in particular important to North County. Our first meeting will be on the 17th of September. We haven't had any more reports, and I'm also grateful for that, since the one we had at the end of February, right in the middle of the 2019 Huskeneck Highway collapse. I want to recognize State Representative David Brock Smith. I'm not surprised you're here. Very much appreciate you being here. I did give a report in the Commissioner comments, the success you had, in particular with the competition of rural Oregon. I'm going to give Senator Hurd a little bit of credit, but down deep, I know that your skills as a legislator and reaching across the aisle and your relationship with everybody in Salem, I'll abbreviate by saying it was basically $5 million come back to our county in four, huh? Six? Well, now, I'm glad I messed up, so you had to correct me. That's awesome. Quickly, and every part of our county, section of our county, I think benefited well. And we start right here with the 1.6 million you got for the port of Port Orford. That's really generating some enthusiasm and excitement. The sentiment study, I'm going to be working with you a little bit on that. We might want to see if we can incorporate a little bit of that for the Brookings Harbor, you know, the port there. I was there for a two-hour meeting yesterday with federal emergency management, and some good things happening there. But we're getting so much sentiment, we need to know how much is coming down the south side from the Chetco Bar Fire and filling the port with aggregate and debris and gravel. And then, of course, the Klondike Fires and the series of fires we've had that are coming down the Illinois. And those are, those two rivers are tremendous source of our pride here in Curry County, as you know. Director Schmelzer and I are working on to fine-tune, hopefully before the end of August, but that might be a realistic and practical date, declaring an emergency, a housing emergency for our county. And she's had some wonderful background in Josephine County with that. And of all the issues that you have worked on for the last six years, seven years, in my two years, I think housing is the number-one issue that we are dealing with. SOD is big, and you've got some tremendous funding there from the state that is going to really open some doors, we believe, for federal funding, the sudden oak death. And I won't talk a lot about that right now, but I'm trying to, as part of your task force, I'm doing everything I can to learn all that I can. And I think we have a chance now, a better chance than we had even a couple of years ago, to mitigate this dreadful pathogen. So back to the housing issue, I'm going to be seeking board approval at some point for Brant Media to work on a video presentation that not only could go out to our citizens in Curry County, but could also be, I think, very effective throughout the state. Just some of the issues that would be covered in this report presentation, however we want to characterize it, would be developer incentives, property available within the county. We know that's not a lot. We know there's some out there that's being untapped. And just the regulations, land use planning, all the above. And so I'll be giving a presentation, maybe not our next general meeting, but I, the more the vision I have, I think this could be, again, very productive for letting the state know where we're at and what, the difficulty we have in solving this problem. And I know Brock Smith has been working on that over the years as well. Governor's Fire Recovery Council, I'll give a report on that. We have a meeting Tuesday. That'll be our sixth meeting. And as I said last week, we're going to give a report to the governor on September, prior to mid-September. And lastly, here it is, approaching the end of July, and we have not had any lightning yet. And we're going to get through the season. Do I have a second on that motion? Matt Hall, you're shaking your head. Hey, I'm not afraid to state the obvious, huh? I've got a real talent there. Be aware. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
Commissioner Gold?
I wanted to report a little bit on some of the education issues that I've been addressing. I went to the SWAC meeting, which was on the 15th, and a lot of people were heard. I think they heard our problems and our issues, as long as some possible solutions to the problems. And I felt that we were heard. There were a lot of people that went there, so that was good. I'm also working with the principal of Brookings Harbor High School to try to get a youth internship program in there. And also, kudos to Port Orford School District. I am blown away by some of their test scores, especially in math. I'm math-oriented, so I want to get all of the school districts in the county together so that they can learn from the successes and all of them try to be better for educating our students. So that's it.
Can I quickly add one thing?
Sure.
You rolled your.
Go ahead.
This is kudos to Port Orford High School, Pacific High. And yes, they have a vinyl machine. They got a $24,000 grant about a year and a half ago, and they can actually do very nice, quality vinyl signs. And the kids are learning the graphics, they're learning that process, and they can do them fairly reasonable, and it is a tremendous machine. If you have a chance to go take a look at it, highly recommend it. It's first-class. And so if you need a vinyl sign, don't go to Coos Bay. You might check Pacific High first. Thank you, that's all.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the comments, and I appreciate the work on the education. As a former school board member, such as yourself, and Port Orford school board member, I'm very proud of our district and their test scores and across the board. Since you brought up housing, Commissioner, of course, it's a statewide issue. I'm sorry, David Brock Smith, state representative of House District 1. I live here in Port Orford. Appreciate the board for being here and coming to the community. I'm also the chair of the Oregon Coastal Caucus, and every year we have a coastal economic summit. This year it will be August 21st and 22nd. At the Three Rivers Casino, we utilize, in the partnership with the tribes, we rotate the coastal economic summit through the casinos. The key points, of course, with this Oregon Coastal Economic Summit or infrastructure investments, a collaborative approach, to which we'll be connecting infrastructure to affordable housing, addressing water quality issues, working on expanding telecommunication and rural broadband, and then a rational Oregon P-20 education infrastructure to achieve equity and maximum impact and utility, as well as streamlining and standardizing permitting process to ensure consistency and project quality around the state. We'll be dealing with seismic infrastructure and resilient and coastline structures. And then finally, the aftermath of House Bill 2020 and the reduced greenhouse gas emissions versus economic costs and adaptation to rural Oregon. And so I would encourage all of the board to, of course, sign up for the Eighth Annual Oregon Economic Summit on August 21st and 22nd, so that we can have these robust discussions. The schedule hasn't been tentatively set, but I believe that I will be on the infrastructure for affordable housing panel with the speaker, Tina Kotek.
That was my next question.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
I plan on attending, as it goes right down. Thanks for helping set that up.
I did want to make one final comment on Commissioner Gold's comments. The SWAC meeting was very interesting, and I do think our voices were heard. Something that I do want to bring up to everyone in Port Orford, though, is, you know, I really want people to look at the special districts in the county and how their, how those numbers come about. Just for a number, the entire general fund of Curry County gets 1.8, roughly $1.8 million to pay our bills. The entire general fund for the county gets $1.8 million. The campus in Brookings, SWAC campus in Brookings, gets $2.1 million of taxpayer money. So there are some things we need to look at in this county and how those numbers come about, where our dollars are spent. I appreciate Commissioner Gold as the liaison to this and this board to look into some of the special districts in this county. And again, I want to thank Port Orford for having us. There are a lot of really, really good things happening in our county right now. Our staff is just, I'm excited for the things that are happening here, and I want everyone to know in Port Orford that your county is working for you to bring Curry County back, tourism back, economic development back to this county, housing, our veterans, everything. We are excited to be here, and we are looking forward to the future of Curry. So thank you. And with that, this meeting is.
You don't need to bang it. It's okay.
Adjourned.
As gentle as you've ever been.